Good evening. I'm going to call the City Council meeting to order for the City of Lafayette on Monday, May 12th. And for the record, all council members and the Vice Mayor are present with an excused absence by City Council member Gina Dawson. I'm sorry my digital laptop is not... Thank you. So do I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Now we will... We don't have a public comment. We should do a public comment, right?
Yes.
Okay. I'll do a public comment on the closed session items only. Do we have any public comment on the closed session? Later, later.
Yeah, when we have an audience. Mayor Candell, I have no speaker slips for persons in the community hall and I have no hands raised in our virtual audience.
Great, thank you. All right, we'll move on into our closed session. We'll be back at seven o'clock. Thank you.
All right, welcome back. The City Council has come back from their closed session with no reportable action. All right, so do, okay, now next is the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the free public for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And since this is the first meeting of the month, I will read our land acknowledgement statement. We acknowledge that Lafayette is part of the unceded ancestral homeland of the Bay Mewoc people. The Bay Mewoc and neighboring Olone people have lived in and moved through this place for thousands of years. They stewarded and shaped this land for hundreds of generations. We express our appreciation and gratitude for this profound legacy, which enhances and contributes to our lives to this day. We will strive to honor this land and strengthen our ties with the indigenous communities that continue to live and work in our East Bay region as our neighbors and community members. We acknowledge and honor them and their ancestors, elders, and next seven generations. So I will take a moment to have Councilmember McCormick say about what we just did this evening.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, just what we're seeing here on the screen behind me is the, one of the two new signs that have been installed by the city honoring the Bay Mewoc people. This one is, this one here is at the Rain Garden on the corner of Golden Gateway and First Street, and then the other one's at the Community Center. And this is an outcome, an output of the Land Acknowledgement Task Force, where we not only did the land acknowledgement, if we heard, but also one of the other, other goals or outcomes was to have educational opportunities for the, for the entire community. And this was one of them. We had a sign unveiling ceremony this afternoon at 5:00 PM, where we had one of the elders that worked with the counts, with the task force, who counseled us, was there and participated in the ceremony, and it was tremendous, a very nice addition to the landscape of Lafayette.
Thank you. All right, next we'll go to public comments for items not on the, for items not on the agenda.
For the speakers, I'll take those who have turned in speaker slips in the community hall, and then we'll go to our persons that are attending via the webinar. Our first speaker is Grace Dixon, to be followed by Lisa Disbro.
Is this on?
It is. So this is an informal thank you for Community Day. That was just May 3rd, and it was a collaboration between the Chamber of Commerce, the City of Lafayette, and the Community Foundation. I'm here, even though I have strong affiliations with all three of those. I am actually here on behalf of All Ages Recreation Downtown to thank Brian Candell, who literally took a power sander, along with two other city employees, and sanded our play tables down so there are no more splinters for our all ages to play with. And boy, they sanded every single, the legs, they upside down, and he was working so hard, he had to take his jacket off on a cold morning. So anyway, thank you very much. It was a very successful Community Day, and I'll bring this over to Joanne.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Grace.
Lisa Disbro.
Good evening. Nice to be here. Lisa Disbro, I'm Moms for Liberty of Contra Costa County. And I remember during COVID, I was doing a little reminiscing that you folks as a council were very involved in the health concerns of Lafayette and La Miranda and Contra Costa at large. And I remember when we had a curfew and everybody was encouraged to wear masks. Our schools were closed. I'm a teacher, so I was involved in teaching online. And today, I'm concerned about the health of the minor children of Lafayette, which fall under your purview. And I want to say that numbers of children in Lafayette schools and the La Miranda at large and in Contra Costa are being given specific ideas about anatomy, physiology, and biology that are false. I just wanted to show two examples to the communities.
I think this is regarding to the protests, which is on the agenda later, because it is directly relating to the protests that you're having at the elementary school. So could you keep your comments for later?
No, because, can I explain why?
No, because it's the same content. We are content neutral. I know, but we are content neutral. And it is the protests that you're doing that's on our agenda later. Lisa, you're on the agenda later, and I know you're trying to spin it like you're not talking about the agenda item later, but we're going to handle that item a little differently.
Let me continue.
No.
Because I wanted to bring up the health issue.
It's not the purview of what's happening in the schools. It's not the purview of our city.
Let me take the next minute. Can I spin to my next comment?
If it doesn't relate to the protests and any of the issues that are being discussed there.
So I'm trying to think how to approach this, because I'm respecting your boundaries. Would it be okay to talk about, would it be okay to request a town hall for discussion on controversial issues that parents and community members might have?
You can request that, of course.
Yeah, I'd like to see that happen. I'd like to see, I was, I listened to the town hall with Congressman DeSagne, and a lot of discussion happened, important discussion. I think there are other issues that need be discussed in the open, and that would be helpful for all community members.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
I'm going to our Zoom audience now, and I have a person unidentified on an iPhone. I'm going to allow you to speak. If you unmute yourself, we can hear you. Hold on. Can you hear us? Mayor Candell, I'm having no luck getting a response from our iPhone participant. Trying.
Thank you, Joanne.
Okay.
Great, thank you. Hopefully come a comment next time at our next City Council meeting. Thank you. All right, we'll go next to our City Manager's Update.
Thank you, and good evening, everyone. On Wednesday, May 21st, the city is going to be hosting an in-person workshop on the downtown Lafayette parking management study. It's going to be right here in the Don Tatzen Hall, starting at 6:00 PM. And anyone who has an opinion about parking, and we all do, one way or the other, are invited to join us and share your parking experiences and provide feedback. In addition to the workshop, there will be an online survey, and you're invited to provide additional comments as well. The construction of the 2025 paving project has started, and if you drive west on Mount Diablo Boulevard towards Acalanis Road, you will notice that the road has been scraped for the start of construction. From the Public Art Committee, the committee is accepting applications for fall exhibitions. Don't miss your chance to showcase your artwork in one of Lafayette's downtown galleries. Information can be found on the city's website. From Parks, Trails, and Recreation, we're getting ready for the summer. There are still a few spaces in the camps that will run all 10 weeks of summer, and you can register online. From the Planning Department, the planning staff applied for a grant of $96,000 to accelerate the construction of ADUs or accessory dwelling units. This is a Senator, former Senator Glazer's brainchild. He had allocated monies to all the cities in his district to facilitate the construction of ADUs. We are receiving $50,000 to create permit-ready ADU plans that will be freely available to our residents to build an ADU, and this will save our residents time and money, because they would be pre-approved, and all you need to do is apply for a building permit. The remaining funds will be granted to projects or ADU applications that obtain a certificate of occupancy before October 1, 2026. This, we're going to be launching this ADU incentive program within the next month and a half, and it'll, we'll have applications online, and we will continue to publicize it. Just for everyone's information, next Monday, the Planning Commission will be considering Sunflower Hill and Saha's proposal for a 48-unit affordable, all affordable housing development on city-owned property at 949 Moraga Road. It's an informational item. No formal action is being proposed. At the same meeting, the Planning Commission will also consider the Oak Hill Place Project, which is a project that, a development that's north of Deer Hill, behind the crosses, and the proposal is for 17 detached, single-family homes with three ADUs. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? No, thank you. Any public comment? No, thank you. That's great news on the ADUs. Thank you. All right, presentation. We have Recognizing Achievements at the Acalanis High School Music Department. So let me open my item here. So we do have, everybody to note, we have a proclamation for the Acalanis Music Department, and they are here, or at least a couple of them are here. I think it would be okay for me to read this and then get you guys to come up and make comments about it, because this is pretty darn exciting. So, "The City of Lafayette, California. Whereas, under the leadership of Acalanis music director, Mr. Edwin Cordoba, instrumental music students has had a successful 2024-2025 season. And whereas, the Acalanis Symphony Orchestra received the Gold Award at the 2025 Chicago International Music Festival. And whereas, the Acalanis Wind Ensemble received a unanimous superior rating at the California Music Educators Association Festival." And it keeps on and on. "Whereas, Acalanis Symphonic Band and Orchestra each received overall superior ratings at the California Music Educators Association Festival. And whereas, the Acalanis Orchestra received a unanimous superior rating at the Homestead Orchestra Festival. And whereas, the Acalanis Jazz Ensemble received a unanimous superior rating in third place at the Campana Jazz Festival, a unanimous superior rating in second place at the Folsom Jazz Festival. And whereas, the Acalanis String Quartet received a superior rating at the California Music Educators Festival, Association Festival. And whereas, Nathan Fang and Milo Su were selected for the 2025 California Honor Orchestra. And so whereas, Nathan Joseph was selected for the 2025 All-State Jazz Ensemble." Wow. So now, therefore, be it resolved that on behalf of the Lafayette City Council, it is my pleasure and honor to congratulate the aforementioned students and ensembles for their achievements this year. Usually we have like questions, and then we go to public comment. Do you guys have any questions? Nope. Okay, so public comment, please come ahead.
Okay, well, Mayor Candell and City Council and public community members, my name is Edwin Cordoba, and I'm the band director and orchestra director at Acalanis High School. I just want to, you know, thank you all for supporting our local schools, and thank you for cataloging all of those accolades. As I hear you list every one of those achievements, I can't help but just reflect on the amount of hours that all of our students place in preparing for these performances. And, and I just, I'm so lucky, and we are so lucky to be able to, again, make music in a community that really values the arts. So thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Anybody else?
Give a few comments. So yes, Mr. Cordoba is absolutely correct that the students are just performing amazingly, creatively, and enthusiastically. But the reason they're doing this is because we have an amazing teacher, who is just finishing his second year at Acalanis, and I think has really just, just upped the game. He's, has them working. They have homework. Right, guys? And just he really inspires them, I think, to work hard and, and put the time in to both work on work on their own independent skills, but also come together as ensemble, which is really magical and amazing. And I think it's just a really great thing that, that Mr. Cordoba is here, and also adding to the vibrant arts community and culture community of Lafayette. And all the concerts at Akalani's are free and open to the public, and they're, everyone is very welcome to join. There will be a chamber concert coming soon on Thursday. And, and then also, this award-winning jazz ensemble and jazz combo will be performing in a benefit concert at Yoshi's Jazz Club on May 19th. Next Monday. No city council meeting. But yeah, really, that one is, is, is a don't miss. And that's going to be with the Campolindo Jazz Ensemble. Okay, not, not jazz band, or big band. Big band. Big band. Big band. So yeah, so thanks so much to Mr. Cordoba. Thank you, city council, for acknowledging his work and also the students' achievements.
Of course. All right, any of the students want to say anything? Okay, well, I guess, oh, please.
I just, I guess I would be remiss in just acknowledging, we've known, obviously, at the La Mer de Music, we've seen a lot of these students start from third, fourth graders and move all the way up. And it's just, it's phenomenal, the dedication, you know, Mr. Cordoba, what he's brought to the program over the last couple of years. I mean, this is the generation that kind of suffered through COVID and did everything and just, you know, keeping Akalani's at the level. We've heard some great things in Akalani's sports lately, which is terrific, but the music department continues to shine, and you make us all very proud. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, and this demonstrates once again the, the value of great teachers and the hard work of students. I just want to say, I thank Stella for this. She alerted me to the event on May 22nd, which is known as the Acapalooza, the Akalani's Chamber Music Collage Concert. And the poster for it is great, too, which is, Stella tells me, is done by an alumnus of Akalani's. I just want the other council members to see this.
It's very cool.
Can we put on the, on the overhead?
So, May 22nd.
Uh, this is great.
Go ahead and show that.
CJ, would you want to use the overhead?
There it goes. That is pretty.
Wow.
Yeah. That tall tower. All right, thank you. Thank you. Yeah, we would, we would love to have a picture. Or any more public comment? Oh, you want, and Jim wants to say something, too. Yeah, go ahead, Jim.
I just wanted to say that, you know, we, we talk a lot about STEM and other subjects in, in a public education, but the arts play such a critical role for creating a rounded, thoughtful society, and in all its different forms. So I think it's just amazing what you all are doing and what the Akalani's program is about. It really is sort of a highlight of our community culture. And just power on, great work.
Sir, any other public comment?
I have our iPhone person again in our webinar, but I cannot seem to get him to talk.
Okay. All right, so thank you, guys. Can we take a picture? We'd love that.
Should we go forward?
Mayor Candell, I think I've got our iPhone person. So if you would like to introduce yourself, and you have three minutes to speak.
Hello, my name is Sheila Castilla, and I would like to congratulate the winners and awardees of this wonderful music honor. I have attended some of the performances by our musical youth, and I'm very proud of them, and I'm very proud that our community supports them. So congratulations, and thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you. All right, guys, thank you very much. Enjoy, oh, what's that? Oh, do I have to vote on the proclamation? No, thank you. Our goal thing. Bye, take care. All right, we'll move on to item 10B, which is Mirel Lafont, the Central and South Director of the Family Justice Center. Go, you can go ahead.
Hi, everyone. My name is Mirel Lafont, and I am a site director at the Central and South Family Justice Center. We recently opened a new location in Danville. For those of you who don't know what a family justice center is, it's legislated in California Penal Code. It's a multi-agency, multidisciplinary center that provides services for victims of crime. So the violent crimes that we deal with are domestic violence, sexual assault, elder abuse, adult dependent abuse, child abuse, and human trafficking. So the reason a family justice center was created is because what we were dealing with was a fragmented system. We had people coming in, victims coming in, who had to access emergency shelters, law enforcement, restraining orders, legal advocacy. So what a family justice center does is create a centralized hub where a victim can come in and be connected to all these. We have specialized personnel, staff personnel, they're called, we call them navigators, and they are specialists in all the community resources. So what they do is they'll meet with a victim, they'll do a brief intake, and then they will help find what best fits that victim. And not, they won't just give them numbers. They'll go ahead and make that warm connection while they're sitting in the office, or sometimes we do them by Zoom or via call. So this really solved the problem of like having poor access. These services are also 100% free. The only qualification is that you need to be a victim of crime. So this is kind of the services under our umbrella. We look at safety, healing, and community. And first is safety. So if you look at our circle here, you'll see we have safety planning, emergency housing, family law, and the safety nets that we provide. After that, we do more of a public health look at things, and we try to build community and build safety programs. We have a lot of youth programs, we have counseling services, and we also have empowerment programming. So that being said, we really try to focus on our communities. Over here in South County, we have a lot of people from different communities, and we have perfectly staffed our centers so that we have culturally specific navigators. We speak Spanish there, Farsi, Chinese, and Arabic. Some of our partners on site are law enforcement agencies, county and city agencies, nonprofit partners, and lawyers for the Family Justice Center. So across Contra Costa County, these are our four locations. We have one in Concord, Danville, Antioch, and Richmond. Thank you.
Oh, thank you so much. Do you have any questions, council member?
Thank you, thank you very much for sharing that with us. And I think it's, it's a little illustrative that you opened one in Danville also, right? Which you might consider maybe non-traditional from a location perspective, but there's obvious demand there. I'm curious where your funding comes from.
So our funding to open our Danville Center came from Measure X funding.
Okay, so it's county, it's mostly county-based?
Yes, mostly county-based. We do have, a lot of our programs are actually from Boca, and some from the Department of Health and Human Services. Of course, now we, unfortunately, we're heavily funded and that, so we're kind of trying to be resourceful on how we can navigate through the political climate, climate with grants.
Thank you.
So that leads me to, I, we're trying to get a feeling for how groups like you guys are getting affected by some of the things in the federal funding. What, about what percentage of your funding comes from federal sources that you think are at risk?
It's 60, it's 65%.
Wow.
We've had meetings recently.
Okay, 65%.
And that pays for programming, and also, those funds also pay for a lot of the staff as well.
Wow, okay, thank you. Any other questions?
So you've mentioned Measure X, so it's a county. So, wow, 65% for the federal side. How much do you get from the county, then?
It was mostly to open our center and to open our center and fund partially, part of my salary and my navigators there. We received $2 million.
Okay. And the other question is, so there's a collaboration with law enforcement and the justice system through your work?
Yes, yes, the District Attorney's Office. She actually sits on our board, and then we have a collaboration with law enforcement. And that's one reason I'm here tonight, and I've been coming to community meetings, just trying to get to know the people in the community and our law enforcement leaders.
Wonderful. Any other questions? All right, public comment?
Mayor Candell, I have no speakers in the community hall and no hands raised at this time.
Great, thank you. Wait, I just want to say thank you. My goodness, that is a, an invaluable service, I'm sure, for those who you are helping. And I thank you for holding it all together. And I, I don't know what to say about the future, what it holds, but we can start getting creative, you know?
Right.
Yeah, reach out to lots of other people. We've got community foundations here, we've got, you know, whatever, so let us know.
And I think that the most important thing is just community, so we just all support each other and talk about the good work that we do.
Yes, thank you, appreciate it. Okay, next one is Capital Projects Assessment Committee.
So, good evening, mayor, city council members. I'm currently staffed for the Capital Projects Assessment Committee. This committee typically meets as needed, but at least once a year, and which is all we met this last year, if, if things are rolling well with our capital improvement program. We did meet, and we went over what we typically do is past projects, what did we finish up? What are we working on, and what are we proposing for the future? And how is funding and staffing and resources going for all those? So, you know, we updated that we had, you know, a paving project and a surface seal project this last year that we completed really well. We also had a storm drain project, those were our major projects last year. And then we have two projects open right now, the paving that was mentioned, if you go on Mount Diablo Boulevard, there'll also be St. Mary's Road, so we're hitting the heavy routes this summer. So caution to all travelers through Lafayette that there may be some delays at points, especially in St. Mary's Road, once school's out. And we have several other projects that are ongoing that we've been working on. We hope to start the BART project, the Pathway PED, this calendar year. I won't, I won't say a month, but after several years, I, I do believe we're going to get to that. So that was all good. And then we also updated that our pavement condition index last year was at a 73. It was starting to decline. We had robust discussions about funding and what we would need to maintain it at a little higher level than that, mid 70s to high 70s. Obviously, with the half-cent sales tax passing, that was really fantastic. So very positive meeting we had because our projections are that we have funding to maintain our streets in even better condition. And we were happy to report that the, the pavement condition index increased to 76 from 73, which is very solid. And with that, we reworked our five-year capital program for pavement maintenance. Less slurry seals and more actual repaving, you get a longer-lasting street. Slurry seals can be a cost-effective option, but if you've got more money, it's better in the long run and, and the initial pavement to actually repave the streets rather than just surface seal them. So a lot of what we presented was the five-year list, and there's a map in the, sorry, it's a pretty small scale, but if you blow it up, you can see, hey, when are you going to get to my street, right? If you're a red, and that, for the community, that is on our website, that map. So those are our proposed streets. We had good discussions. I think in general CPAC was in positive support of the program. I do have Ann and Bob here. Ann is the current chair. Both have been on CPAC for several years, and going to turn it over if they have any comments here.
Well, I just wanted to say, last year, at this time, we were talking about what's going to be the funding source so we can keep the streets, and, you know, the way they've, they've improved greatly over the years, because these guys are magicians at using what money they've had. But we're very, very pleased that the sales tax passed because we didn't want to preside over the decline of the index. So now it makes our meetings more pleasant, and the people are going to be very happy. We're happy for the, the public support, because this is really going to keep our roads in good condition.
All right, thank you. Anybody have any questions?
Just a, a quick question, so, thank you. It was just a question on the, the slurry seal versus the, the repaving, which I know you kind of hinted at that last year, 18 months ago, I think we had a presentation. So that looks like the, the economy, or at least the cost factor, the cost hasn't really changed, and you, this is just like the new plan going forward. This wasn't a little aberration in the cost.
So we did discuss last year how the surface seal prices escalated much faster than the pavement prices. So it, it used to be, you know, maybe one-fourth as much. Well, now it's half as much, but it's a seven-year life and not a 20-year life, and the product isn't as good in the first place. So having this extra, basically a million dollars a year, allows the, the different treatments to be used to maintain. And it's kind of a no-brainer going forward. We, with our Street Saver Program, every three years, roughly, a consultant actually goes out and physically looks at the street, and then they run the software scenarios with us. And we did a lot of back and forth with our consultant that was working on that, and this is funded through MTC, by the way. And so this is very consistent, nine-county-wide. We pretty much all use the Street Saver Program, so, you know, an 83 in Concord is an 83 in Lafayette, should be as close to apples to apples. So it really did show that we can get a higher PCI and longer-life streets if we do the repavements. And this is mostly on residential streets, so some of the streets that are in a little more decline, having more cracks and so forth, there may be in the 50s in the PCI, 50 to 60. If we surface sealed those and did base repairs, we might get those up to 70. But if we repave it, the PCI will be 100. It'll be like a brand-new street, and instead of it lasting five to seven years, it'll last 20-plus.
That's phenomenal.
That's great, thank you. Any other questions? A comment, okay. All right, do we have any public comment?
I have no one in the community hall, but I do have Lauren McKay Herbeck, and you are live.
Hi, city council. Hi, Mike. Just a suggestion and hopefully a recommendation moving forward to keep our streets and the repaving efforts lasting, as you said, 20-plus years. It would be great for residents to receive actionable communication prior to repaving. I know we're right in the middle of what's looking to be well over a month and a half, possibly two-month sewer upgrade effort on Moraga Boulevard. We were not notified about this, except for one little communication that was sent to residents back in October, letting us know that a public meeting was happening. And as we can see, this, we had our street torn up about 10 years ago. And for any homeowner on the street that has done any sort of renovation work, we have all experienced that we've needed to upgrade our sewer connections. So clearly, the beautiful street that we had 10 years ago didn't last for 20-plus years because we all had to tear into the street. And I'm just, I'm, I'm worried that the work that will be happening now and happening in the future, it will not last the 20-plus years that we're hoping that it would be. And I think just advanced communication to residents about, hey, this repeat, this repaving is going to be happening. You know, maybe you want to start looking at those upgrades now so that we could, you know, maybe save some construction costs, maybe waive some permitting, maybe you coordinate with your neighbors in order to create those connected sewer lines, or get those potential projects done. Maybe you coordinate with your neighbors in order to create those connected sewer lines or get those potential projects done before streets get repaired. Because unfortunately, what I see is that we're going to have these beautiful streets and they're not going to last as long as we'd like. So I'd love for us to, you know, do better due diligence and, you know, making our money go a little bit further. And I think that helps, that happens with a lot more planning, so.
Thank you. Any questions for the speaker? No questions, thank you, Lauren.
No additional speakers at this time, Mayor Candell.
Okay, great, thank you. All right, Councilmember.
Just a couple of quick comments. So I, in my prior life, I worked with the city of Arinda on its road improvement program, which involved several attempts to do geo bond, one of which, a third of which finally passed. And I think back then their pavement condition index or PCI was in the forties. And now like, I think in the seventies or maybe kind of where we are, maybe a bit higher. But the one thing I learned is that if you let that PCI deteriorate, it's a hockey-stick function. And the cost to fix the roads goes up almost exponentially. So if you let the roads go bad, the implications financially are really pretty horrific. And when I ran for this office, I've talked to our former mayor, Erling Horn, who was around in the nineties when we sold our geo bonds to fix the roads. And he said, the one thing you need to do is make sure the roads stay fixed. And I'm really glad that Measure H passed because it enables us to sort of stay on top of things. And this may seem kind of wonky, public improvement stuff, but having a PCI in the mid-seventies is a beautiful thing. You know, and I think your strategy of doing the repaving to sort of give a longer life and enhance the roads further just seemed really smart to me, especially when the cost differentials really narrowed so much. So terrific work. I know we'll talk about the roads later on and storm drains and good stuff like that, but I just wanted to say that it's a great effort you all are doing because there's nothing like having good roads.
Any other comments? No. I have to have a question, and maybe it's a city manager. So we're going to have our Measure H Oversight Committee. And how does this play in with CPAC? Or do we know yet?
In terms of how much money goes towards the roads?
Yeah.
That will be part of your budget deliberations. And Measure H will be looking at the audits for Measure H revenues. And so if the council allocates the revenues to roads, this committee will ensure that staff does that and that you are made aware of it.
Got it, thank you. So we'll be talking about that probably next year or later this year. All right, thank you. Any other comments? Thank you guys so much for all your work and I'm glad your meetings are happier now. All right, we're going to go to the consent calendar. Does anybody want to pull anything on consent?
I'd like to pull item eleven A to allow the city clerk to make an adjustment.
Okay. Any other? Any members of the public want to pull an item?
No, let's see. Rob Boy would like to speak on the consent calendar.
Okay.
Good evening. I looked at the item, let's see, eleven A one for the April fourteenth minutes that I had asked to pull last time because there were some comments missing. And it doesn't seem like those were added yet in the, what do you call it, the transcribed minutes? So that's my only comment.
Okay, so eleven A, that is the one that we are pulling, correct?
Yes.
Yes, and we are pulling that, that was the one that Jim Cervantes is pulling.
Oh, okay, all right, sorry. The comment, I'll give you the specific spot, it was.
Well, when it comes back, we can talk about it, right?
Oh, okay, sorry.
Not a problem. My Mala's saying, yes, that's how it happens. I was hoping that's how it happens, yes. Okay, great. Now we will move on to old business and we've got.
We need a motion.
Oh, oh, we need a motion to adopt the.
Yeah, I'll move adoption of items eleven B, C, and D of the consent calendar.
Right, and item A two, right?
Do I have a second?
Yes, second.
Okay, great, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Now we'll go on to item twelve A with Jamie Williams.
Thank you, Mayor. I will start off and then I'll pass it to our police chief. If you recall back in April at your council meeting, you heard a robust discussion on protests that were occurring outside of Lafayette Elementary School. You asked staff to return with additional information related to what ordinances had been adopted in other cities in the state of California, which I will be addressing. And then you asked for additional information relating to enforcement and traffic issues that our police chief will be addressing. So the four cities we looked at that were addressed at the last meeting that this was discussed are San Diego, Napa, Lancaster, and Sacramento. The four cities have adopted ordinances. I have summarized those ordinances in the staff report and then attached the city of San Diego's ordinance in its entirety. The city of San Diego and Lancaster have both adopted ordinances that apply to healthcare facilities, places of worship, and school grounds. Those ordinances specifically prohibit a person from obstructing an individual from entering or exiting one of these covered facilities. Furthermore, within a radius of a hundred feet from the entrance of one of these covered facilities, you cannot approach within eight feet a person to either intimidate or harass the individual. Likewise, you can't harass or intimidate an individual who's trying to enter or exit one of these facilities. And then lastly, within that hundred-foot radius, if someone is trying to enter or exit, you cannot pass a leaflet or handbill to that person without their consent, I should say. Display a sign to that person or engage in oral protest, education, or counseling. This all applies within eight feet of the individual. Lancaster adopted a similar ordinance, so I won't, I won't repeat myself there. Napa and Sacramento only adopted ordinances that are specific to healthcare facilities or reproductive healthcare facility. Sacramento is similar to what I just mentioned. It has a hundred-foot radius, you can't approach within eight feet to intimidate or harass an individual who's trying to enter or exit the healthcare facility. Napa has an ordinance that prohibits following or harassing a person within thirty feet of the reproductive healthcare facility. The city has to post a sign to show where that thirty-feet border is. I want to specify that this ordinance doesn't prohibit an individual from standing on a sidewalk with a sign. So that isn't considered harassing or following an individual. And then it's also unlawful to impede access or departure from one of these facilities under Napa's ordinance. I will pass it on to our police chief to talk about enforcement and traffic issues.
Thank you, Mala. Hello, good evening. Echoing what she said about what the request was from City Council last month, we had queried calls for service in front of Lafayette Elementary School. And there were three calls for police at the, in front of the school, all those regarding further protesters. And there were found to be no crimes that were committed and officers left without any arrest or any police reports. It also received about eight emails from citizens who were concerned about protests, both in front of Lafayette Elementary School and further down the road on Tuesday evenings about the different protests and safety. Coupled with that, I had asked the engineering department to run a streetlight analysis in front of Lafayette Elementary, starting from School Street going north to Mount Diablo. And I had requested both months in September and October of last year, when there were not protesters present, as well as March from this year, when there were. Last year, there was about nineteen thousand seven hundred vehicles that traveled on Maraga Road in that area. That was about the daily average. This year was about twenty thousand four hundred, so a slight increase from last year. Between drop-off time last year from eight to nine in the morning, there was about fourteen hundred vehicles. This year, there was around fourteen hundred as well, or fifteen hundred, excuse me. And then the afternoon pickup, there was about thirteen hundred vehicles on that stretch of road where there was about fourteen hundred in March of this year. The posted speed limit in front of the school is twenty-five miles an hour. Last year, during that stretch of road, around the morning drop-off was twenty-one miles an hour. In the afternoon, excuse me, I'm sorry, it was about seventeen miles an hour in the morning drop-off and the afternoon was about twenty miles an hour. Just the amount of sheer volume of traffic on that street is, you couldn't go that much faster, you'd get in accidents. And then I circle back on that, which is based on the information we had and the lack of accidents. Oh, I should say there was zero traffic accidents in the last month as well there. So lack of accidents in the vicinity of the school, we do not believe that any changes in traffic patterns can necessarily be attributed to the activities off the roadway, of the roadway, excuse me, outside the Lafayette Elementary School. Nor can we attribute any of these findings with a protest. And just summarizing the last paragraph there in the staff report, that we continue to work with the protesters on both sides just to make sure people's First Amendments are protected and people have a safe space to voice opposing views. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you both for excellent staff reports, really want to thank you. Do we have any questions? Yeah, good. Vice Mayor.
Yeah, I just want to confirm with the city attorney that if any of those ordinances that you described were enacted by Lafayette, those would not.
Thank you, sweetie. Can you make me a plate?
Oh, Rob, we can hear you.
Those, those would not prohibit someone with a sign standing on the sidewalk across the Maraga Road from the elementary school. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And it would not prohibit anyone from standing with a sign for whatever cause on the sidewalk in front of the elementary school. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And then I want to ask the police chief, and thank you for looking at all this information. I just want to confirm because it's, this general information on traffic flow and there are no accidents is fine. You know, the whole idea of Vision Zero is taking away, looking ahead and thinking of ways that can avoid accidents. And is it possible to say that, well, if there are people with signs, whatever those signs say, near the school in drop-off and pickup times, are you? And I know this is unfair to ask, so you can just say you don't have the information, but is it, are you confident that that's a safe situation in our pickup and drop-off times at Lafayette Elementary School?
Right, so I spoke this morning with Ron, the crossing guard. I went out there this morning and I was there the day after our meeting last month. So I had, from the beginning of this month of query, so I got some perspective from him as well as my motor officers, who go out there routinely. And because just the sheer volume on Maraga Road at that point, they are out there a lot enforcing and just monitoring traffic. There are street signs, there are billboards, there are other signs for businesses. And it's tough to say, because we have zero traffic accidents, that their presence there makes it any more dangerous. I mean, drivers, if you're driving behind the wheel, you know, of an automobile, you have to be aware of everything that's going on around you. And the speed being between seventeen and twenty-one miles an hour, if the speed were higher, it might be a different situation. We might be responding to different calls for service at that point. But I know I'm giving you a really long answer, though I can't really comment, but that's the information I was able to get in the last month from that.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
All right, thank you. Councilwoman Cervantes.
Thank you very much. I'd like to follow up with our city attorney, picking up from the vice mayor. So if I understand this sort of San Diego ordinance, this sort of bubble zone concept, the eight-foot gap or separation, if you will. So if a protester is there, holding a sign and stationary, that fits within that framework, right?
It does, they would not be approaching an individual.
Yeah, so the key is you're just not approaching, but if you're just standing there under that ordinance, it's fine.
Correct.
Okay, and.
And I should add, Councilmember Cervantes, you can approach with consent. So if someone is, is talking to you and.
Thank you. And with respect to like, the entrance of a school, because, you know, especially in the pickup-drop-off, it's people going back and forth. What does the San Diego ordinance say about that? Can, or how would that might apply in our circumstances?
So there's a hundred-foot radius and they measure that hundred feet from the main entrance door. Or if the property is fenced and gated, then from the main entrance gate of the covered facility. So they measure that hundred-foot radius that way. And then within that radius, you can't approach without consent within eight feet.
Right, but as long as you're stationary with a sign, you're fine?
Correct.
That's the way it sort of works?
Correct, if you're stationary, holding your sign, and you're not impeding access, you know, entering and exit, you're fine.
Okay, all right, that's helpful, thank, that's kind of what I thought, but I just wanted to make sure I completely understood that point. And then a question for our police chief, and thank you for the reporting as well. I guess it makes sense to me that maybe that even though the speed limit is twenty-five miles an hour, the actual flow is at a lower speed just given the congestion, which maybe does help a bit paradoxically. But just to get your sense of it, would it be, again, because we got a school where it's sort of pickup-drop-off, would it be maybe arguably better in terms of like the flow around the school? If, if anyone protesting was across the street, would that make a difference? Or maybe it's just speculation, I don't want to put you on the spot here, but I'd like to get your sense of that.
Sure, it's, sure, it's speculation at this point, right? We can prove that where their location is would be more safe. It would think, standing there, the, both times I went, there was no protesters there, by the way. So I couldn't see that part firsthand. But there are distractions on the road, there are distractions in our hand from people driving, even talking with a motor officer. One of the sites he gave, the person admitted to them, yeah, they were on their cell phone and he asked them why. And he said to take a picture of the people who were protesting to share it. So again, a lot of the responsibility goes back to the drivers on the road to, to, to the best they can to not pay attention to what's going on on the sidewalk and maintain what's going on in their car and what's safe around them. It's tough to say, sir.
Right, okay.
Any other questions? No, okay, so I do, just to be super clear on this, it's more from, from Mala. It doesn't seem like any of these ordinances would change any behavior that we have here in Lafayette for these protests.
Yes, I think if you were to adopt, for instance, the San Diego ordinance, I don't think any of the protesters would be violating that ordinance.
Great, thank you, just being super clear. All right, so I guess we will move on to public comments. And I do want to say, once again, like I did last time, we want to be content neutral. We are content neutral on this topic. And so it's more about how the protests are going on, not the why. Because the why is allowed, right, of course. And so in order to keep this focused on the mechanics of the protests and how we legally can deal with it as a city, if we start going too deeply into the whys, I will try to get you to come back to the, the what is happening here. So, thank you.
Mayor Candell, we have two speakers in the community hall. Lisa Disbro followed by Marlene Hufner. You can correct me when you come to the podium.
Well, I'm Lisa Disbro and I'm going to give this the good old college try. I reject your premise that you are content neutral. And the reason I reject that is because of the April eighth, two thousand twenty-four Lafayette Council meeting, where two members of the Lafayette community came up and made very harmful accusatory statements about actions that I was doing, even though they didn't name me. And the whole, none of you, you guys asked questions, you were enthusiastically curious about the accusation that someone in the community was standing across from the school, taking photos and contacting bad people on the internet to come harm children in Lafayette. And I think the city manager remembers that I came and had a conversation with you, Ms. Narup. Because I am a lifetime credential teacher. I defend children, that's why I'm on the sidewalk. And the idea that the Lafayette City Council did not contact former police chief Ben Aldred nor Child Protective Services to investigate whether I or. to investigate whether I or anyone was doing such terrible efforts against our children, I was in shock. And furthermore, I was accused in that commentary on, in April of 2024. And those comments were repeated in the La Miranda Weekly. Secondly, or thirdly, those, the person making those comments, one of them, said that those comments were my video, supposedly my video. I don't even know how this person came up with this idea. I don't share any video with this person, were given to Superintendent Stevens. I want to say to you that here in Lafayette, inclusivity is not for all voices, and that is the main problem. I stand on the edge of the sidewalk near the red line zone. There's no room for anybody to pass in front. I do not block a single person. I'm 5'2". Everybody passes behind me. And I will say that I think you need to bring the temperature against people who have, who, who believe and binary, because you are putting, I will wrap it up, you are putting us at harm. I have experienced it multiple times. I have three police incident reports. I have aggressive dads. You need to help all voices, not just the voices you prefer.
Thank you. Thank you, Lisa. A question for the speaker. One second. Councilmember Cervantes has a question?
Yes, thank you. This is about the form of the protest, I think, but to give you a, if the individual, say, on the other side of this debate, like, agreed to, say, protest across the street, if they were to do so, would that, would you be willing to do that also? Be across the street from the school?
No.
Okay.
I get to choose where I stand.
Yeah, thank you.
Marlene, and if you would be so kind as to pronounce your last name.
It's Huffaker, Marlene Huffaker. So, I am here to speak in support of the people, peacefully holding signs protesting the promotion of transgender ideology to elementary school students. And I must say, I am wondering about the neutrality of the board, because my understanding is that there are demonstrations that take place every Tuesday on some corners in Lafayette that are actually promoted by some members of the board. And they look every bit as dangerous to me, as what the protesters across from the school are doing, if not, much more so. People walk around from corner to corner, a intermix, they, you know, talk to one another quite a bit, not always pleasantly. There's some yelling that goes on. So, you know, I don't see the council upset about that, or discussing, you know, how to stop it by any means. So, it seems to me, the, the captain here has pretty much explained what the free speech rights of people are, and that you cannot close down someone simply standing on a sidewalk. So, obviously, the main issue is the one that, that we're protesting about, which is why you would allow children to be put at risk by being taught completely fantasy with regard to their own bodies and the possibility that they-
So, can we keep it to the how, the protest, not the why of the protest?
What their, what their sex would be.
Thank you, thank you. All right, appreciate that. Thank you. Any questions?
Mayor Candell, we have speakers in our virtual audience. Sheila Castilla is our first speaker, to be followed by Pat Huey.
Hello.
I recently read the city attorney's updated analysis of other town efforts to curtail free speech. All of these ordinances require actions of harassment and intimidation. A person quietly standing with signs, warning the public, parents and children, of the dangers of hormones, puberty blockers, and surgeries to change the biological sex of young children, is not harassment or intimidation. I interpret them as messages of love attempting to protect children. Clearly, the goal by certain community members is to suppress speech that they don't like. Frankly, the protesters wouldn't even need to be standing in front of the school if the Lafayette School District weren't raising flags and supporting the gender transition of children. I'm befuddled why anybody wishes to support the gender transition of children.
Can we keep it to the, the how, and not the why? Thank you.
I just told you how. And so, I'm going to continue speaking, and I say that the only one I can see in front of that school who's telling the truth, and we as community leaders need to be leading with truth. So, the only one standing in front of that school telling the truth is holding those signs that some community members want to eliminate. I want more of that free speech, not less. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. Any questions?
[applause]
No questions, thank you.
Pat Huey? Pat, all you have to do is unmute yourself. We can see you, and you're in the meeting. I'll come back to Pat, and we'll go back, we'll go on to Beverly Talbot. Beverly, we see you in the meeting.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. I would like to echo the previous speaker. I think it's incredibly outrageous that Lisa Disborough's free speech rights have been curtailed. She's been intimidated. She is only expressing her opinion, and also, a growing consensus among medical professionals that pediatric gender transition is, is not a good thing, and it is quite harmful. And unfortunately, the schools continue to promote the idea to children, very impressionable children, that they might be born in the wrong body, and that they might be the wrong, the wrong sex, as opposed to simply-
Can we keep it to the details of the protest?
Yeah.
Thank you.
You, you've kind of switched around your logic a bit, so I'd like to continue speaking. And I just want to say, this is very intimidating, what's happened to Lisa, and I want to stand up for her free speech rights, to continue speaking truth to this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? No, thank you for, for your, your speaking. Thank you.
Pat Huey, we're going to try you again. If you can unmute yourself, I can see you in the meeting.
Okay, hello, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Hooray, all right, all right. I support Lisa Disborough's right to free speech. She is a longtime teacher and a responsible citizen who cares about the safety of our children. Not allowing parents to hear what she has to say will only harm their children. When Lisa, when Lisa does, does her protest outside the school, she is in a public space, this is protected by the First Amendment. She does not prevent people from entering the school, nor does she behave in any way that is inappropriate. She speaks the truth when she warns about the dangers of promoting gender ideology. Not allowing her to protest is not only a violation of her First Amendment rights, but it endangers the lives of the children in your schools. By not allowing her to speak, you're denying parents healthcare information for their children. Is that transparency? Is this being unbiased about information your citizens are entitled to receive? Thank you.
No, thank you very much. Any questions? No.
David Bertie?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. A quick statement. The bias of this school, of this board against the school protests is very evident to me tonight. I ask you to think about what you're saying. Consider the protests over the anti-Trump protests on Tuesday. It is very evident that you're extremely biased against any conservatives in this area, and I, I think it's a terrible thing. We deserve consideration, and I thank you for that.
Thank you very much.
Mayor Candell, there are no additional speakers at this time.
Uh, one more, one more.
I won't take up too much time. I'm just, quick question. So, earlier when Lisa came up here to speak, under what was not considered on tonight's agenda, she tried to speak about, in your words, the why, and you wouldn't let her. You told her she can come back, so she did, when it was on the agenda, and you still wouldn't let her talk about what's happening in the classrooms, the why. At what point can she talk about the why and what's happening in the classrooms? Because at no point tonight has she been able to. And I think it's a fair question. You told her she could come back, and you booted her the first time, you prevented her the second time. So, she was told she could, when?
It's, it's not a back and forth, yeah.
It's not a back and forth?
No.
Okay.
Sorry.
Well, I-
It's public comment, yes.
Okay, well, then it's for the record, at least. I guess it's, everyone sees that this is a very valid question, and I hope, you know, people will have their own judgment, that there is clearly a bias in this city council. Obviously, other people have mentioned what's happening with the protests, and you, right outside the Safeway here, in terms of the DOGE protests, in terms of the, which is obviously a much larger gathering, and that's been promoted from you. So, yeah, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
Oh, I have one more speaker, Sarah, in our virtual audience. Sarah Lind. You're live, Sarah.
Hi, everybody. I just wanted to ask Mayor Candell if you wouldn't mind inviting people to protest in front of Lafayette Elementary School, like you did, inviting everybody to protest outside on Mount Diablo. Because you, like you said, you are a neutral body, so I'd like to hear you invite everybody to share in the protest against gender ideology. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for the speaker?
No additional speakers at this time, Mayor Candell.
All right, thank you. So, sorry, everybody, the voice got loud. So, thank you. And I apologize for making that confusing. The item at the beginning is for items not on the agenda, and she clearly was in, into this item. And that was my, my push then, and I guess it was confusing, and I'm sorry. I, I, we don't talk, but anyways, but I do want to say, the reason why we're not talking about the why is to protect you, right? It's to protect both sides of this issue, because people get very emotional. And I, and I'm sorry, last April, that that happened to you, and I, I am sorry. It, when things come like that really quickly, kind of out of context, because we weren't expecting it, it's sometimes hard to react in the moment, and maybe later you go, gosh, I probably should have done differently. And this is, we know that you have had some of these calls, and, and I'm, and I'm sorry for that, about that, because it is your right to be out there. That is my 100% belief. And I do think that everybody has a right to protest, and it is regardless of the why. And, and I'm sorry if that has been confusing, and I'm sorry that other people weren't here tonight, and I, I could have, I would have told them the same thing, right? To show that I'm not doing it just for one side, but there was nobody else speaking where I could show you that. So, that, that's why the meeting is ending up the way it is. And, and I think we are going to go and talk about the actual ordinances that we might be considering or not. And, and so, if we have anybody here that wants to make any comments, I would take them. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Candell. So-
So, this is the first, uh, song of an elected city official to talk about what underlies everything-
It's not working.
Yeah, anything will be-
I'm, I'm not as loud as that prior speaker, obviously. But, I was going to say, as a newly-elected councilperson, this is the first time I think I've had to sort of confront the issues that our constitution raises with respect to free speech, in, in the First Amendment, which speaks to bridging the freedom of speech, or the press, and so on. And to me, I looked at our oath of office, which calls upon us to support and defend the Constitution of the United States, and then further on, bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States. This is the oath of office that we all took, as in the state constitution. And so, I look at this, and so, support, where I disagree with it. My, my view on that, the why, doesn't matter. It's really the right of an individual to express themselves under the, under the term of the Constitution, interpreted by the courts, which our city attorney is very capably outlined. So, it would take something, in my mind, really extraordinary for us to try to sort of constrain that speech. Public safety, the safety of the children, to me, is, is important, but I listened to what our police chief said, and I can't get there with respect to the safety of the children argument. I, I did ask whether maybe the protest across the street, maybe if that helped create a greater safety environment. I asked that as a question, but that's just more of a question, not anything about a, a policy I'd advocate. So, I think I come around to this, and again, I appreciate the work our city attorney did, but I, I don't think I can get there with respect to creating limitations around the right of individuals to express themselves. In this venue, or the venue at the Four Corners on the Tuesdays, it's all their right to speak their minds, which is something which is, I think, is an extraordinary gift to the American people. And so, my bias on this is to basically, in effect, do nothing, to let the protest go on. If there's a situation where maybe there is harassment and so on, we have law enforcement to address that. And I will say that our chief and this police force has been extraordinarily respectful of the rights of individuals to express themselves, which I think is part of the, the tenor of our approach here. So, for my druthers on this, I think we just receive and file, and thank staff, our city attorney, our police chief for the work that they did, thank the community members at this meeting and the prior one for expressing themselves. Passionate people who care about this country. And with that, I'll pass on.
Thank you. Excellent. Very well said.
So, the, I will, I will say, the analysis from the city attorney and the police chief were both quite good, I think helped. I, I want to acknowledge, obviously, in prior council meetings, we had petitions circulated, and lots of passionate speakers asking, you know, something be done. They brought up a couple of the things that were addressed, right? Talking about the, the buffer zones, all this stuff, and I thought, analysis tonight, questions from Vice Mayor Endurian, others, just confirmed that, unfortunately, there was under, they were under a misunderstanding, that actually, any sort of kind of thing they were talking about would actually achieve the goals that they were thinking of, which would basically be some move protests or whatever. So, it's pretty clear that there's, not only must we be content neutral, but even anything that, that was suggested by the, those other, the other citizens that spoke, would not achieve that goal. So, I'm, I'm certainly in favor of receiving it, filing it, thanking the attorney and the city attorney and the police chief for their work, and moving on.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
I, I support what Councilmembers Cervantes and McCormick have said. I just want to push back a little bit about any suggestion that the council has not been content neutral. I think that in every time that we've met in this location, and have discussed this on the public record, we have been completely content neutral, when we just consider it on, on this and any other free speech issue that's come before us, whatever the location has been. I just, I really do want to push back on that, because we have not expressed our personal views. We have not taken into account what the cause has been. The, we've discussed it in terms of public safety. And with respect to this particular issue, I don't think we can say that a case has been made in terms of needing to take action with their- can say that a case has been made in terms of needing to take action with respect to public safety, obviously. With rights come responsibilities. So we would hope that anyone who is protesting anywhere, whether it's at the corner, the Safeway, Maraga Road corners, or in front of the elementary school, or anywhere, would keep in mind that there always is a risk when there are cars passing by, no matter what the speed limit, and particularly at the elementary school where there are children getting in and out of cars. So, to me, it's, it's good that the speed limit is low, but you've got that added factor that you, you don't have in, in other places. So we just hope that, no matter where it occurs, that people are keeping in mind, whether it's at Safeway, don't get into the crosswalks until the light change. It, it's just part of the civic responsibility that comes with the right to express your view.
Thank you. That's why I love working with this current council. They, we, we do understand our, our jobs here, and we do support every protest that happens in our town, and we have had a history of that in terms of keeping you safe, keeping the public safe, which is all this city council can do. And everything in these ordinances that might, we might have considered, they just don't apply here. They don't. I think that the protesters in our town have been really, I mean, honestly, very well behaved. And, and I, I, I don't know why you're, you're so incredulous, but- I, I agree, and that's why we have to keep on it and make sure that everybody is safe, right? And we're, we're dedicated to that. We are, and if, I'm sorry that you doubt that, but we are. And I know, and I don't want to, I don't want to go, but I do want to make sure everybody is safe, and that's number one. And I don't think these ordinances could change anything that you guys are doing, because the protesters are well within their rights to be doing exactly what they are doing. So, we support this, and please, thank you. Thank you, guys. I've learned a lot. This is probably one of the biggest, you know, things that comes in front of a council like this, because it goes right straight to the Constitution. And thank you for helping us get through this, you know, because it's the first time we've all kind of faced this, and I think we're all learning. And, you know, thank you for that part of this. I've, I've learned a lot. And thank you for your comments. So we will receive and file. Do we need to take a vote on that? Okay. All right, thank you. All right, we'll go on to our next agenda item, which are, is Mike Moran and our capital improvement program.
CJ, we need the overhead again.
Well, hello again. This is a little review, but since that was more of a Capital Projects Assessment Committee report and update, this is the more extensive report, and I won't go through it all. It's really summarized on this table, which includes ongoing projects and proposed projects for next year that this council has not already approved and has not already budgeted. Some you have, some you haven't. So there, there is a distinguishing there. At this meeting, I'm not asking for you to approve the budgets for them, because that would come formally with the budget ask in June, but this is what would be proposed unless you come to some different direction for, for staff. So, the new projects next year are just really the 2026 pavement repair, and I will have one more report regarding that, because we need to isolate that and request that that be used to get our SB1 gas tax funding. And I have to do annual reporting, I'm actually biennial, twice a year, I have to report back to CTC regarding our SB1 project or projects. So that's the one that we highlight for that. And the Olympic at Pleasant Hill Road, RRFB, which is the third item up there, those are the two new projects. Everything else you've seen before, they've been ongoing, we've been working on design, or they've been delayed by BART or some other thing. But the top half of, the top two, three quarters of this budget are what we're showing for actual construction in 2026, and then a couple other projects, the West Creeks Project and the bridge maintenance design, although we will be working on design in 2026. We don't anticipate starting construction until at least 2027. So those two are broken off down at the bottom. But these are the proposed funding sources. Again, our program's going pretty well. Thank you so much for the funding from the community and from the council to support it, even in the couple of years leading up to not having the half cent sales tax, because it was able to, to, to really lift our PCI by a few points, as, as pointed out earlier, that is very important, and I think it's the, the most cost-effective to do in the long term. So, my recommendation is just approve the proposed capital projects, including the, the five-year updated pavement management program. And again, we'll have the final budget be approved as part of the budget item, and then authorize staff to file a notice of exemption for the proposed projects that are still requiring that environmental clearance, which in this case would be the pavement repair project only, because the RRFB or Flashing Beacon Crossing at the roundabout, we have done a notice of exemption, because that was required to, to be pre-submitted for entering for a grant from, from MTC, the TDA grant. So we did get a little bit of funding for that, but they require that you do that environmental upfront, so that they know that the, the project will proceed if you're awarded the grant. So it basically is one project that I need to do a notice of exemption for, the 2026 pavement repair. And that's it. Any questions for me?
Great. Any questions, Vice Mayor?
Yeah, just, just to be clear, on number one, on the recommendations, that waits till June 23. You don't need anything from us this evening unless we have concerns that we want to express.
That's exactly correct. If you see anything in there that you, you want to change a budget, now's a great time to speak up.
Okay. And number two, do you need the authorization tonight?
I would like the authorization for the notice of exemption, just, so the recommendation number two?
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. It was, I loved, the narrative was great, but seeing it all on the grid was very, was very helpful. Just a couple of questions, clarification questions. I'm curious, the difference, we have the RFB crossings, you've got, we have two projects there.
Right.
Obviously, the Hampton and Mount Diablo is quite long, but it still feels like it's a similar kind of infrastructure. Why is the one on, on the, the roundabout more, so much less expensive than the one on, at Hampton?
So, because the, the one at the roundabout, there's already sidewalks and ADA ramps.
Oh, I see. Okay.
And then the one at Hampton, because it's crossing effectively six to seven lanes of asphalt, if you will, we will be adding a center median, which will be a refuge in the middle, and we don't have ADA compliant ramps at either side. So it's basically that concrete work that's costing, whereas at the Flashing Beacon, you're looking at effectively just the cost of the beacon itself.
So, we could almost take for the other one, it's 135 or whatever for the infrastructure and 65.
Right. It's, it's mostly infrastructure and not the flashing beacons themselves.
I am looking forward to that one on Mount Diablo. I think that's going to be a tremendous safety addition for everything. Another question, which I think we're asking a lot, is going to be, obviously, I see federal earmark, that makes me nervous, things that we're counting on federal money for. Can you give us any, I know you mentioned in your staff report a couple of times that we have to just kind of take things as they come. Any other insight or commentary you can give on that?
No, other than, you know, we've just been reporting, you know, what our concerns are. I, I know our, our legislators are, are actively, you know, lobbying on our behalf to maintain funding that's, that's been approved prior. I don't know that anybody knows for sure, but we're obviously proceeding as if we're going to receive all the funding. You know, the school topper next year is, St. Mary's is, is a big one, because there's a lot of funding, well, the two categories there, the federal earmark and the OBAG III, One Bay Area Grant, those are both federal funds.
Okay.
So that's the bulk of that project.
Fingers crossed.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mayor Candell. So I, I confess, I did look at this to see if my road was on the list, but it's a private road, so we're not covered.
I hope you're not on the list.
We're not on the list. And for the record, the neighbors chipped in to fix the road, which cost a chunk of money. Councilmember McCormick asked my question about federal funding, but I do have a question on, there's a reference to the 2024 storm drain rehabilitation project, and I recall, and I'm going to go to our sister city, Arinda, in about 2015, around the holiday season, there was a major rainstorm and minor road got taken out. You might remember that. It really caused significant congestion, as that was a major access point for the northern part of Arinda. And I wonder, is there like any kind of vulnerability assessment we do with respect to these storm drains? Because they're in the ground, no one pays attention to them, they're often not in great shape, but you get a major storm event, and it can unleash havoc. So I'm just kind of curious-
Yeah.
-how we look at those things.
So, in 1995, the Capital Projects Assessment Committee was very instrumental in passing the road and drain bond. It's been 30 years. When I was hired in 1997, and I was just having a conversation with somebody tonight, I would say a third of my project funding for every pavement project was replacing storm drains. We were actively updating our storm drain maps. There weren't any before. We did field assessments, we did mapping, we did evaluations, are, are there corrugated metal pipes? We took care of areas that flooded or where things failed. There, there always is a vulnerability. I was reporting a couple of years ago in discussions with CPAC at Paulson across Mount Diablo Boulevard at the, at the health club there. We finally got that cleaned out and evaluated, and we really think that it's in good shape. But the road was settling, and we didn't, and there was a storm drain under there, and we, we wanted to see, is there a correlation there? Do we have a failed storm drain? So, we're sensitive to that. Maraga at, at Ream had the same thing, where literally a traffic signal sunk into the ground with a storm and basically a collapsing storm drain pipe. So we've been fortunate that some of the, the sinks and failures we've had have been smaller pipes over the years, but we've also aggressively sought after and replaced, or removed and rerouted many sections of storm drain in the years that I've been here. So, we have a summer intern whose job is in part to mark all the inlets for, you know, drains to the bay, and, and, and don't, don't put anything in there that shouldn't be in there other than stormwater, basically. And another job that he was doing was updating those maps that we did put together in 1997, 1998, and proofing them out and truthing them out to see, is this corrugated metal, is it 15 inches, is, does it go from here to here? Can I see this? So, we're doing a follow-up of that, kind of phase two, if you will, decades later, because we do want to know the answer to that question. What are our vulnerabilities out there? We've, we've only found a couple of pipes that, that are more concerning, and mostly it's because we've replaced a lot of them. That doesn't mean there aren't storm drains running through people's side yards and backyards that are in good shape. There are many that are private drains that those residents may not realize are private drains, and in some cases, we have easements. Mostly, we don't. If it's running through your yard, that's because the developer did that as the least expensive thing they could do when they put your homes in. And it was not typically accepted by the county if it's pre-68, 1968, or the city if it's after 1968, if it's running through a private property. There are some exceptions to that, of course, where it is the city's responsibility, but most of those are not.
Thank you. I'm sure we'll be hearing about this private storm drains at some point.
We get the calls every time it really rains hard, right, and, and it's storming and flooding, you know.
All right, any other? No, thank you. My great report. I just have one notice. So on those roads, you, you do have, I was just looking at the scores of some of those roads, and some of the scores of those roads, most of them are low, right? But then there's, there's a smattering of ones that are actually pretty high, and I just-
Right.
What's the logic there?
Well, it may have to do with other things. For example, school topper, we're going to throw in, because we're doing school topper walkway, and we're going to have that done at the same time, and because we're going to impact, we're going to, we're going to break the road by putting those pathways in, so it's going to need repaving. There are some others that it may have to do with something else, like a walkway, or something else that we need to do as well, and while we're there, we want to lump that together. So, it's true that not 100% of every street, you know, is, is a level playing field.
Right.
There are some, there are some justifications for packaging these two streets together, because they're near each other, and we don't want to come back in 10 years.
That's, that's what I figured.
Things like that. But some of them are also walkway-driven. I know, like Stanley and Quant, there have been requests for these different traffic calming or different sidewalk or walkway, and this is a way of doing that with the same project.
Thank you. That's it? All right. Any public comments?
Mayor, no public comments.
Okay. Okay, Jim has a comment.
I'm sorry, I love infrastructure, so this is like my go-to place. I just wanted to flag one thing in your report, where this is that slurry seal repaving discussion, where you talked to City of Pleasant Hill, and I just wanted to kudos on that. I think the idea of like collaborating with our colleagues in other cities to sort of like, to go to school on them, so to speak, you know, especially where, you noted the cost differential had gone from four times to two, and yet you get a 20-year useful life out of this, you know, repaving. I, I think that's great. I think it's really important that, you know, you're in touch with your colleagues, and it benefits us. So, I just wanted to salute you on that, and thank you for-
Thank you for that. And I'd like to actually call out that the City County Engineering Advisory Committee is all the county and all entities of Lafayette, and that's where basically city engineers and public works directors meet about once a month. I was the chair of that two years ago, and it is for that very purpose. We do talk to one another, we do have round robins and say, who's, you know, battling this issue with the utility, or what are you seeing in this street? And we also have technical speakers come in. I'm, I'm very grateful for that, and we've had people come into Contra Costa County who maybe came from an, an out, a different county, really comment, they're like, wow, we didn't have anything like this where I used to work. So, there's definitely value there. We don't have to reinvent the wheel. We're kind of all in the same place and working for the same public. So, we definitely call each other and, and reach out, so, and we'll continue to do so.
Thank you.
One comment slash question. So just to confirm, it looks like St. Mary's Road, we're doing the repaving there now, because we've had the, we did the, the East Bay Mud has done their work. So I think we just need to be respectful of just the poor St. Mary's people that live on St. Mary's Road who suffered through East Bay Mud, and that, that redirection, everything they had to do for months on end, and now we're gonna, we're gonna, they're gonna have a, have something else happen to them December as well on that. So, I guess everything we can do to keep the traffic flowing, I know you're working on it anyway, will be greatly appreciated by anybody that lives anywhere near or uses that artery, because that's a well-traveled road.
We, we did, we did learn some lessons, even though we thought we knew all you could know about rerouting traffic through there. We, we did learn some. I, I know Tim Clark, who's going to be managing that, has already been in discussions with our community center, of course, which gets a lot of the traffic right through that zone. So, unfortunately, we're the last one there, so people are going to really be tired of the construction by the time we get there. But we will not be as, we will not take as long as, you know, a water main project. But we'll do the best we can. We'll definitely have signage and notifications. If-
That would be my-
If you get any complaints, we'll take them, we will evaluate them, we will respond and, and change things if we can.
Yeah, this is probably the, I mean, going back to Lauren's comment earlier, this is where over-communication is probably the rule, the rule of thumb here, because, you know, no matter, you send one little notice, and people sometimes, it just gets thrown away with the junk mail like we do with our stuff, right? So, appreciate that. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other comments?
I think we're going to have a motion. Super.
Okay, so I move to authorize staff to file a notice of exemption for all proposed projects that meet notice of exemption criteria and that do not already have a notice of exemption on file with the county.
I second.
Great. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Excellent report. Thank you.
So that's, that's the next-
Oh, thank you. Sorry.
Yeah. Next item, it's, it's really just part three of the same discussion. Sorry for breaking it into this long.
Go ahead. I, I move that we adopt resolution 25, 2025 dash 29, authorizing use of SB1 funds for Lafayette's 2026 pavement maintenance project.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Got it. Super. All right, so items move from consent, item 11A.
Yes, Councilmember Cervantes removed this item for me, and we need to add comments under public comments for items not on the agenda of April 12th, from Beth Born. So, with your permission, I will add her comments.
Are any discussion?
Nope. Could we also, on page five, the fifth line down, change January 26th to January 2026?
Okay. Okay. Got it.
All right. Any public comment?
No public comment at this time. Oh, wait. Sarah Lind.
Okay. Thank you.
In our virtual audience. Sarah, you're allowed to speak.
Hi. I'm sorry if my last comment came across incredibly loud, and so I'm trying my best to talk softly. But I would just like to also point out, if you can note in the minutes when somebody is told that they are, they need to stop talking, because for whatever reason, their comment or topic is not within the city's purview. Thank you.
Thank you.
No additional speakers at this time.
All right. Thank you. So do we have a motion to adopt item 11A as modified?
So moved.
And I'll second that.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Thank you. All right. So go on to council and commission reports.
I can start off.
Okay.
So I'd like to relay quickly, last week, last week ago, we had the Emergency Preparedness Commission met. We had our special guests, a couple of representatives from East Bay Mud, in particular David Briggs, who's head of facilities spoke, and I just thought I'd give a couple of quick highlights of that. It was actually a great session, it was very informative. And one comment he made that struck me was that East Bay Mud and other agencies learned a lot from the 1991 Oakland Hills fire, where departments would show up and find that their hoses or couplings did not match the hydrants. So there was a real effort to sort of like systematize the fire system across, you know, this part of the state. He said that with respect to the fire hydrants, they've got roughly 31,000 hydrants, they check 10% of them every year, and out of the 31,000, roughly 15 are out of service. And you can identify them because they have bags over them, sort of like a body bag for a hydrant. But I thought that was rather extraordinary, in that such a small percentage was out of service, and they do inspect a meaningful percentage in a given year. Another thing he touched on was, they typically keep their reservoirs at about half-capacity for water quality purposes, but in a red flag day warning or situation, they fill the reservoirs all the way to 100%. And when asked how long that took, he said that was roughly four hours, which astounded me. So their protocol is to go to 100% on all reservoirs in a red flag situation. So I thought that was good, good forward planning. The other thing he noted, and I'll follow this on this with the city manager, but there are different sort of like forums that they're involved with. There's a fire agency forum, a hills emergency forum, East Bay Wildfire Coalition, working in tandem with Confire, MOFD, and other jurisdictions. So I thought it'd be worth following up to see where we are in that, and that's a conversation with the city manager. But I took some comfort in that these various jurisdictions that sort of overlap the fire risk topic, there's at least conversations going on there, sort of akin to the earlier discussion about capital improvements. But there's an effort to, I think, to coordinate and organize in a way I wasn't aware of, and I think it's been only stepped up in the wake of the Los Angeles fires. So it was a good session at the Emergency Preparedness Commission, and I thought it was really helpful to have them come and speak. I think if the council wanted to have something with East Bay Mud to talk about this, I'm sure they'd be more than happy to cooperate. It was like, it was a very, very helpful discussion. The second thing I have is maybe a little less serious, but this goes to like part of the cultural aspect of this, makes this community really special. But last Saturday, the Rotary sponsor, the festival at the rez, and which was a terrific chance for a variety of musicians to show their stuff. It was the Rossmore Big Band, plus students from a variety of middle schools. The proceeds from the fundraising side went to benefit Edna Brewer Middle School, Roseup Middle School, and Stanley Middle School to provide enhanced musical equipment for the students there, and they were terrific. They played a number of pieces from that kind of Duke Ellington classic American sound period, and it was really well-attended. And I do want to do a shout-out here, in that there were a lot of volunteers from Rotary, and including our city manager, but also a lot of the key business committee, part, the key part of our business committee was represented, the stalwarts of Diablo Foods, Lee Prock Plumbing Sequoia, and La Merinda Music, playing a role to support the effort. And it was really, I think, a great experience for the community to be on a beautiful day at the rez and enjoy music created by, you know, residents in our community, especially middle schoolers. Thank you.
Nice report. Thank you.
Right. Absolutely. I think we should probably shout out the fact that when the generator ran out of gas, the police went and got gas to fill the generator so that the show could go on. So I think that's very noteworthy. I just want to do a quick shout-out. I know Mayor Candell may talk about this, but obviously we mentioned we had Community Day recently, and I need to do a particular shout-out to my team on Community Day, which was the East End banner box, because the city staff, I mean, the public works just an amazing job getting that banner, re-rehabilitating the entire box. I think a lot of people don't even know it's there, because it's so overgrown and blended in with the foliage, and the fact that, I mean, the whole structure's been rebuilt, repainted, thanks to our team, which included our city clerk, Joanne, who was just a tireless worker. We did the whole area, and it looks fantastic. So Community Day, everybody's a winner, but our team was especially a winner, because it was.
Maybe we should pass out prizes next time.
Maybe we should. Maybe we should.
Okay. So two things. We had a tri-city meeting last week that was very well-attended. It was really good. There is one item on there that no doubt we'll be talking about, is the county-wide evacuation study, that there were a lot of concerns from all of the councils, that it is not enough money to cover the kind of detail that we were thinking we were expecting out of a county-wide evacuation study. And so that's concerning. We'll obviously be watching it. The RFP for the actual evacuation study is coming out, I guess, this month, or, yeah, right. Before, right. And so as soon as we get that, we will know more about exactly what happened. And then last week, we had one of the Lafayette liaison's meetings, where we get all a bunch of, so many people that are great. And so I'm not going to go over everything, but just a couple of quick things is, Aaron McAllister was there, and good news, the helicopter that we had stationed just out for a while out in Byron is going to be from June 1st through the whole fire season this year. And that is a big deal, because apparently CAL FIRE, we are maybe not in the maps for getting immediate CAL FIRE support. And so having this helicopter in Byron is our stopgap until we maybe have to wait a little bit longer for CAL FIRE. So really big deal. The Park Theater, they filed permits with Lafayette Planning. Yay! The, there's one more thing. Oh, the Lafayette Libraries. So the National Endowment of the Arts, their funding is being either totally threatened or whatever, but it does cut libraries, and that was something that I didn't realize. And so that's also something for us to look out for, for their funding. And I think that was it. All right. Written communications? We've got the board member, oh, that we have a proclamation recognizing the 75th anniversary of the La Merinda Arts Council. So this lovely proclamation that was requested by Alana Olaski, and it is, it is great. They've been around for 75 years, and our Lafayette has been pivotal in supporting them and supporting everything that they have been doing for these last years. So I have a proclamation that we will send off to her. All right. Do you have any public comment on that?
No comments.
Anything else to say? No. Thank you. So thank you, La Merinda Arts Council. And last thing is, we will adjourn. No, wait, wait, wait. Oh, we have to actually, we have to vote on it. Okay. Do I have a motion to approve?